All right, good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. The meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application, if we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, would you lead us in our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. I see no citizens, no members of the public joining us this evening, so I guess we won't be having any citizens' participation. So the next item is to approve the state primary election warrant for September 6th, Is there a motion from the board on this?
I move that we approve the state primary election warrant for September 6th, 2022.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion from the board? Mr. Fantasy, do you think it's necessary to read the primary warrant?
No.
Okay. No discussion from the board?
All I have to say is please vote on December, September 6th.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It is unanimous. Thank you. The next item is the appointment of a Select Board representative to the Old Colony Elder Services. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, no, I know, I'll suggest that we nominate Connie Kelly as the Select Board representative. She's the director at the Council on Aging, as you know, and has done a great job, so...
She's the current representative?
She is, at that position.
Is there a motion from the board?
I move we appoint the Select Board representative to the Old Colony Elder Services as Connie Kelly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Fantasy, nobody else stepped up?
That's correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It is unanimous. Thank you. All right, the next item is the Town Administrator Update. Mr. Fantasy?
Well, that was fast.[222.23][222.23](laughing) Usually that's at the end.
He has a little different agenda this evening.
It is. Okay, so the first one is the North Carver Water District. Unfortunately, we had another resignation on the commission. Stephen Romano has resigned. We had a meeting last night, and at the conclusion of the meeting, he submitted his resignation from the commission. So that leaves only one active member, Mike Palomary. At last night's meeting, they asked if they could meet with the Select Board on September 6th, probably 5:45, and have a joint meeting with the Select Board and a remaining member of the North Carver Water District. We have one applicant for one of the positions. That's Eric Mueller, currently on the Board of Health, and he has stepped up for this. So we'll have him, we'll look at that for an appointment. Also make known that there's now another opening. If somebody can come forward out there, whoever's interested in this North Carver Water District, please submit your application to the Select Board's office.
And we can repost that second. When is the first opening? When is that posted?
That's been posted about three weeks now.
But, I mean, is there a closing date, or is it just...
I think it was just posted.
I think it's the last day of August.
Okay. Because if, I know, I know it's possible that we might have to have a quick meeting on Friday, and I don't know if Mr. Palomary is available, but it's possible if they wanted to get another member of the board, just so they could have a quorum, so they could have a meeting if they could. Perhaps that's something we could, should only take a couple of minutes.
Let me talk to him.
I don't know if he's available.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with him tonight after this meeting.
Either, if not, we'll have it September 6th, but it might be helpful. Okay, sorry.
Okay, Small Water Systems notified us this week, some good news. The membranes that were consistently said that it would take 33 to 52 weeks to get them here. There was an order for the same membranes by another customer, and that customer backed out of that purchase. So we're notified that they have them on hand out of state, but they can be shipped here next week, and then the process can start about installing them. So that's great news, to get it done. In the meantime, they voted to clean the wells, have a contractor come in and clean the wells, and do some fracking. And I know that has like a bad word, but I think it's just pushing water through to clean out the whole system. So they want that system to be pristine when they put the new membranes in and get it going again. So that was good. Last night's meeting, oh, that was the last thing on that. 11 Green Street, RFP, the request for proposal for the House, it went out live July 27th, 2022. It requested sealed proposals for the creation of affordable housing unit, preferably to a town veteran. There was a viewing on a property on August 2nd, and four potential proposers came forward to look at the property. Proposals will be received up until 9:00 a.m. on August 31st, after which they'll be opened, and then they'll be evaluated by criteria. And once the evaluation is done, then the Select Board would pick a person or company.
May I, Mr. Fantasy, wasn't it, wasn't it, didn't the RFP say it wasn't to veterans, but rather to an organization that does affordable housing?
Yeah, it's not a, yeah, but that organization, part of that will be for affordable housing, preferably for a veteran in the town of Carver.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
The open meeting law training, Elaine has set up training for committees and staff on the open meeting law. It's going to take place September 27th in this room, and there's going to be two sessions. The first one will be at 4:00 in the afternoon, and the second one will be for 6:00. So that's provided by Town Council at no charge. It's part of the agreement that we have with them, so they'll be coming in to put on this program. So I hope we can get a number of committee members, and especially the chairs of the committees, to come in and take part in that, so... And the last thing I want to mention is that I'm relocating the veteran services from the basement floor to the first floor of the Town Hall. Doing that because I think, first of all, I think it sends a different message for our veterans, that they're not downstairs in the basement. And secondly, it gives more privacy for them. It's two offices, and it gives more availability for those veterans who may have mobility issues, and they can't go up and downstairs and so forth. So it's going to be, everybody's excited about that. We've taken out the mailroom, we're relocating the mailroom, and the recreation had a storage area that was being used for that, so we're using those two offices, which is across from the inspectional services on the first floor. So, so, oh, good, we're happy about that.
Is the mailroom going to go downstairs where...
Well, we're looking at two places right now. When Elaine gets back, you know, she'll tell me where it goes.[603.82][603.82](laughing)
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else? All right, any questions?
Yeah. Quick question. Getting back to the North Carver Water District, when we had discussions on the membrane coming in, it was like 50 weeks out. How many weeks out is it now?
From here, it's, it'll be installed by mid-October.
So, so one other thing we talked about were, I know you said right terminology, locks on it, so that we won't have some of the issues that we had in the past, and then we talked about the fire chief getting involved. Has any work been done on securing...
I'll check with them. I haven't checked with them lately, so, but I'll check and let you know. I know, I think there was, there was only four hydrants in the town, which is amazing, there's so few, but, but he was looking into that, the best way to secure those, last I talked to him, so.
And just for the public at home, I think you mean four working hydrants?
Right.
Correct, because there's a lot of, I think, hydrants that have been put in over time.
Yeah, four working hydrants out of the, out of the North Carver Water District.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have a request for use of town property, Shirtlift Park, by Michelle King, on August 21st, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Is there a motion from the board on this?
I move that we approve the request for use of Shirtlift Park town property to Michelle King on August 21st, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just a, I guess, a point of order. The date that she wrote on there said 8/8/21.
So... Yeah, she's a little, a little late.[725.91][725.91](laughing) So it's 22.
Yeah.
We'll make a scribbler's error.
Just, just kind of note that, so it's the right year, for the record.
And it's for a band that's coming in, the local band of children who grew up in Carver that are putting this on, so...
All right, anything else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, we have the minutes of August 2nd, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 2nd, 2022?
Second.
Motion is second. I have one correction to these minutes, and I just lost my place, so give me a second. Let's see, on the, on the first page, near the bottom, where we talk about setting hours for early voting for the primary election. At the beginning of that discussion, I asked Mr. Fantasy whether it would be in the purview of that article to also set the hours for the actual primary election, since that wasn't on the agenda. And Mr. Fantasy indicated that he thought it would be within the purview of that article, so I think, I think we should amend the minutes to reflect that.
So moved.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Right, and then there was one other thing, and forgive me, I made some written notes, but I left them at my desk at the office, so if you just give me one minute to find where we are on the, on the, so... So on page, page five of the minutes, near the bottom, and I guess I'm just looking for some clarification from the board and how I remember, we made, we made a list of six goals for the Select Board that were going to go onto the Town Administrator Evaluation Form. They're sort of in the middle of that page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And then later it says the six goals identified will be added to the evaluation, but we, I'm just wondering, I think there was some talk about ARPA, and then there was some talk about using ARPA for affordable housing, and I'm wondering if they should be separate goals, or if they're the, if ARPA is sort of the, the, ARPA plan is sort of the same goal? And I didn't recall clearly, but it does later on say that the six goals will be added to the Town Administrator Evaluation Form. So I just want to make sure that when we're doing that, and we set up Mr. Fantasy's evaluation, that we were all clear on what he's being evaluated on.
Well, I, if I may, I was the one who mentioned affordable housing, but the way I said it was to use ARPA funds primarily for affordable housing.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of vacant lots and foreclosed homes in town. My goal for affordable housing is not to have a cluster of affordable houses, but to have it spread out.
Oh, and I understand that, and I, I remember that, and I, I'm just wondering, as it pertains to the Town Administrator Evaluation Form, whether that's, that's a separate item that should be listed on his evaluation form or not?
Whether what's a separate item?
The, the affordable housing in...
Well, it was one of my goals.
Okay, is that, is that how everyone remembers it?
I remember tied to ARPA to a certain point.
It did. I said specifically to use ARPA funds for that.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so is it, is it, you're saying that it'll be my authority to use ARPA funds to whatever I want to do with them?
No.
And in order to get a good grade here?
No, in fact, I believe at one point in a previous meeting, we agreed in here that we would set up a committee to sort of discuss and bring some ARPA suggestions back to the board. I'm just...
So I'm wondering how that would be evaluated?
Well, and that's why, that's my concern as well. That's why I brought it up, because I wonder, I wonder if maybe we should just have a separate, if we should just approve the minutes and have a separate agenda item maybe at the next meeting to define what the town selectman's goals for the Town Administrator's Evaluation Form should be.
Yeah, I see your point.
Makes sense.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and I believe a second to approve the minutes as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It is unanimous. Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda this evening is a Chapter 61A application for Fuller Street Assessor's map 50, lots, lot 8-0. So are you here to speak to that? All right, if you could just step up to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Mr. Chair, I'm in a butter to this project, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board. My name's Pat Jackson, I'm with Fuller Street Solar. It was requested that I bring some slightly larger printouts.
Oh, great, thank you.
That would be helpful. I could pass those out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fantasy, just so everyone at home and the board here is clear, we did, we did have Solar Moratorium pass town meeting. All applications for this particular project were in prior to that.
Correct, this was from May of 2021.
All right, thank you. All right, so...
Thank you. I don't have too much to present, but the summary essentially is that Fuller Street, Solar Carver, as the chair, correctly stated, has already received its local, state, and federal permits, and so we're not ready to start construction yet, but we just want to get prepared. And so one of these items would be the request from the project company and the landowner that the town waive its right of first refusal and exercise the, it's, the terminology's tricky, exercise, it's notice of non-exercise, I think, on this project. That's, that's the goal, and just a little bit about the project itself, if that would be helpful.
Are both of these properties, are they both cranberry bogs?
Yeah, so both of them are cranberry bogs. They're connected except with essentially a driving path in between. It's part of a larger bog facility. I do have a printout of the, in color, the satellite version, if that would be helpful, but this is, these are two connected bogs within a bog complex of about six bogs, so it's surrounded by either additional bogs or tailwater ponds or headwater ponds within a much larger complex. In total, it's about 26 acres of over 200, so it's a small subset of the property.
Mr. Fantasy, did you have anything on this?
Meaning what?
This project? I didn't know if you had anything to add on this project. Okay.
No, other than, you know, the permits, but...
Okay. All right, questions from the board?
I guess my questions have more to do with process more than anything else. I'm assuming that, as you'd said, this is, this has already went through, what, conservation and planning?
It's, it's got from planning, it's got the site plan was passed and the special permit granted.
So it went through the, whatever our solar bylaws, it went through that process? Any kind of variances were done? It's been approved and everything else? And I guess my question would be, again, this is more process. What if this board decided they wanted to buy it? I'm not saying we should, but if we did?
So then we would negotiate with the owner to purchase it.
So right now, we don't know a dollar value. Would an appraisal get done of some sort?
Yes.
Or does the...
Yep.
Okay. So it does seem kind of strange, not that I think we want to buy it, but if we said we wanted to execute our right to purchase, we don't even have a number. We don't know, we don't know what we're spending.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
We don't.
Well, let's just say we knew it. What would be source of funds for something like this? Is it...
We'd go to town meeting to appropriate funds for it, like from free cash or something else.
Or CPC money or something like that?
Yep.
Could you use CPC money?
Yeah, we could use CPC money. The other thing is that it's gone before the town planner, the conservation agent, and the town assessor, and they have to do a review and then decide whether it's worth the purchase and whether they should purchase it or recommend a purchase, and all three checked off no on this, on both these projects, so...
But again, from a process standpoint, if we said we wanted to go forward, we wanted to purchase tonight, then we'd have to work with the owner to get a price.
That's right.
And if the price was too high, we could still say, well, we changed our mind, we don't want to exercise our right.
Yep, and then they would just go forward.
I'm just trying to get the process down.
And there's time limits within those things, so it can't hang on for a year.
Yep.
It's 30 days here, 120 days here.
So these are landlocked pieces by the looks of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hewens, did you want to speak as a butter to this property?
Oops. I can do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my lot is map 50, lot HH. It's a flag lot, if you look on the plan there, and it, it abuts the so-called entrance to Forest Street. That is a maple swamp, and my husband attended the planning board hearings as in a butter and was told at the time by their representative that that was just a paper road and it wasn't going to be used. And then if you look on page 26 of the lease agreement, it says they can use that access, it's not a road, it's a swamp. They can use that to lay cables and overhead wires and so on and so forth. So I'd like to know what is the intent? Where one thing was said in the planning board and a different thing is being said in the lease agreement?
Sure. Just speaking out loud, but without looking at the detailed plans, we do not plan to use any new access roads. I know there's an existing Eversource distribution line that cuts across the property and services the area. We'll be tying into that, but we won't be using new, new rights of way. We're not going through the maple swamp.
So why does the lease agreement say that that, that they're given the right to do that?
I can just tell you what's designed, and it's not to go through it.
And it's what?
It's not to go through the, that area.
So what is the access road, Fuller Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Sorry, again.
I should say, Mr. Chair, that I am speaking here just as a resident, not, I don't have anything to do with the board, the Select Board, when I was questioning him.
Absolutely, that's why, that's why earlier I made the statement that you're speaking as in a, as in a butter. I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
Sure, I'm just going back to when we did other solar projects in the past. I'm looking at the tax component of it. If I remember correctly, is that, you know, sometimes we'd go to town meeting, and town meeting would vote to give the Select Board the authority to go in and negotiate a pilot program. And I guess my question has to do with, is that a step here? Because there is a component here that talks about tax assessments on this. Will it be a pilot program, a separate negotiation with the Board of Selectmen or the assessor, or...
Yeah, and that, that would happen later. I mean, right now, this is just between the tenant and the owner.
Right.
Not the town.
So it's a step-by-step.
Yep, so it's another, another stage if they come in to seek a pilot.
Okay.
And that is something we're very interested in doing and looking to set up a meeting on. But yeah, as Mr. Fantasy says, that's technically a separate part of the process.
And not to put you in the spotlight, but do we have different calculations, or some pilot programs, some based on asset values?
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to get them all standardized, so that everybody's on the same page. They're, they're all over the place right now, depending on the negotiation that took place over the years, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? This board guy, anything? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't know how to word it, but by, essentially, I'm, I don't know if there's any value for the town to go and purchase this property, so I guess, how would you word a waiving of the right of first refusal? So would...
That, that works.
That would, make a motion to waive our right of first refusal for Chapter 61A Fuller Street Assessor's map 50, lot 8-0?
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes two to one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, the next item on our agenda is another 61A. This is a Plymouth Street Assessor's map 48, lot 2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, thank you for these larger maps. They make it a lot easier.
You're welcome.
And I guess I would just ask you the same question I asked on the last one. These are both cranberry bogs?
Yes, sir.
And they're both landlocked?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do you have anything you'd like to say to the board on this?
It's, it's quite similar to the last one in that these are a subset of a much larger bog complex, so what you're looking at in the kind of highlighted dashes... Um, so where you're looking at, um, in the kind of highlighted dashes is the area being requested to be removed. Um, but it's, I guess it's hard to tell on these types of, uh, maps. There, there are, it is surrounded by additional cranberry bogs.
All right. Uh, questions on the board?
Yeah, I guess more process as well. Um, so looking at this landlocked pieces, but I do see what, a butters over here and, and everybody's been note. Is it really in the butter, is there in a butter list? Cause this is within a bog itself. Has everyone been contacted, see if anybody had any questions, issues or concerns?
John, could you use your mic, 'cause the heat just came on?
Shelby, could you, you turn that on?
My question has to do with process. Have any abut, has all the abutters been notified about this project?
Um, yes, Mr. Carter. Um, abutters were involved in the planning process, the site plan review and special permit process. Um, several attended the public hearings. Um, landowner or us spoke with, um, with them and they've all essentially signed off or said their comments. Um, but yes, they're very involved, not very involved, but they were publicly involved in the process.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anything else? Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. Um, and my understanding, if I'm remembering the area correctly, is it's, it's pretty screened even from the closer, closest to butters, is that correct?
It is pretty screened, yeah. We'll be doing some additional screening, um, but, um, it's screened and again, scale can be challenging, but it's such a large complex that the majority of the panels are, are several hundred feet away from, um, houses. So the distance plus some screening make it, uh, relatively well-screened.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything on this?
Uh, no, this again goes back to June of twenty-twenty-one and it was a four-to-one vote in favor of, uh.
And do we have anything from planning or anyone have a?
That's the planning board, no.
Okay, anything else from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we ex- exercise our right not to purchase, um, assessors map forty-eight, lot two dash zero on Plymouth Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Three to one, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Appreciate you making the larger maps as well.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Oh.
Hold on, am I?
It's fine, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda are select board, uh, community announcements. Uh, Ms. Hewens?
I, I have none. I just hope that people will vote on September sixth. Um, it's very important who you vote for, it really matters, even though this is just a primary. So that's it, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Um, I don't have any comments this time.
All right. Ms. Bogart?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Uh, I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, I just wanna congratulate our neighbors to the, the west. Uh, the Middleborough twelve-year-old, uh, Little League team is on their way to Williamsport for the Little League World Series. I think it's the first time in quite some time that a Massachusetts team has, has represented to England. And, uh, it's quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to, uh, the Middleborough, Middleborough boys. And I also just wanted to echo Ms. Hewens' comment on the election on September, uh, sixth. Nothing is an import, is as important as your vote, so don't, uh, don't waste it. Make sure you take some time to vote. And, uh, with that, I would exercise, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and good night.